Okay, council members, Raymond?
Here.
Wintero?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Najarian?
Here. And will you read the one item?
Interim Fire Chief regarding discussion of fire operations, staffing, emergency responses, and related department issues.
And I would just like to announce before we get into this that I do have a pre-scheduled meeting. I will be leaving in about 25 minutes. I'll be returning approximately four thirty, four forty, at which time I will rejoin the special meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver.
May I ask, we have eighty-seven PowerPoint slides. I've seen us go through ten in three hours. How many hours is this report going to take with eighty-seven PowerPoint presentations?
Yes, I was going to comment on that, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say lest you have a coronary from the number of PowerPoint slides-
I will.
...the core of the slides is thirty-six. If you went to slide thirty-seven, you'd see that's labeled supplemental material. It's just backup material. But if you wanted more detail, it's available, but it's not part of the core presentation. There are a lot of items. The second set of slides is a discussion of overtime. We anticipated that at a separate study session, so it's kind of phase two to this. We thought it should be a topic all in itself. It gets touched on slightly in the core of the key issues we're responding to here today, but the overtime issue is a complex one, and we didn't anticipate you'd be able to get through that set today, so we're providing it to you anyway.
Primarily thirty-six today.
Primarily thirty-six today.
Thirty-six, yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Mr. Mayor, I was planning to ask this, but now I will just because of that. This is something that's been a long time coming, and I know many of my colleagues and folks in the public are very interested in the material. I would like to ask if we can get through the material, through the presentation before comments, because I know for me, anyway, I need to hear the through line on this.
Fine.
I'm sure I will have questions. I know my colleagues are going to have questions. I know there's probably some input from the public, but I, that's just a request, and I will live with whatever you decide.
During my time at the helm, I will stick to that. However, when I leave-
Mr. Yusefian.
-goes to Mr. Yusefian, so that would be his determination to me. Maybe if you ask him nicely.
Maybe I can ask more questions to wait for you to get back at four o'clock. How's that?
There's a way.
I think it would be nice if Mr. Yusefian held his questions till Mr. Najarian returned. I think that would be unfair.
There you go.
The point is to get through it as in one shot and then-
Not the message.
Hold the questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that the staff has worked hard to put these together in a way that they make logical sense and hopefully flow with the topics at hand, but I think it would be useful to listen to the whole presentation because obviously all the information can't be up in the first one or two slides. It does take some time, and there may be information at the end that will make more sense in the context of what you heard earlier, so I think that would be useful. So you might jot your questions, thoughts down on the slides as we go through them, and then once we get through them, we'll go back and see where we had questions. And as I note, there are a number of slides of supplemental information that frankly be pulled out of the core only because it just became so voluminous to get through, but it is a lot of good data, a lot of comparisons with other cities, standards, statistics for Glendale, and maybe if you have questions in the first part, we may very well want to bring up some of the supplemental slides to help explain what we were commenting on. With that, let me turn to Chief Biggs. Chief?
Mr. Yusefian.
I have a question. I have two packets. Are they identical? One we received on Friday? Okay.
Okay, chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, I'm Don Biggs, Fire Chief, Glendale Fire Department. The Fire Department was asked to report to the city council and through this forum to the interested public on how and why the Glendale Fire Department is staffed the way it is and why we operate the way we do. Presentation that follows will illustrate why we operate the way we do. The makeup and operations of the department are based on a long history, over a hundred years, of constant development and change directed by the needs and direction of the city. The city determines the level of protection and emergency response that it wants to have, and the Fire Department fulfills that direction. I want to thank the city manager staff, the city auditor, and the Fire Department staff and personnel who helped put all this stuff together. It was a lot of work and a lot of, particularly in the supplemental area, a lot of research and a lot of facts that had to be gathered. We're always open to responsible and representative examination by the public. We work very hard to see that the fire companies maintain the quickest possible response times. We've made some recent adjustments to affect those response times. We'll talk about those. Change in the fire service is always done very carefully and with a great deal of thought. We've had some issues over the years that have caused that some changes occurred that weren't well thought through, and they usually turn around to bite us, so we're very careful about change, but we do regularly make changes as they affect the operations of the Fire Department. I'd like to introduce Deputy Chief Steve Howard, who will do most of the presentation and narrate the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Najarian, members of the council, and fellow staff. All right, maybe we could get the lights, and we'll go right into this. Understand, the time is short, so we'll, I believe we'll be able to make it through the thirty-six slides before you have to go, Mayor.
Really? Wow, this fast.
We'll go fast, and then we'll come back, and we'll pick up what we need to as you have questions. Five areas that we're going to talk about for this first session here. The risk management, Fire Department resources as it pertains to the operations side of the house, staffing levels, professional or volunteer staffing, emergency response. We do have quite a bit of supplemental material, and then a future PowerPoint and discussion on overtime. We've recently had several issues have been raised concerning our operations. These include company staffing, volunteers, auxiliaries, reserves, all those names almost being synonymous, response times, NFPA seventeen-ten standard, the ISO classification, company activities, department fitness program, OSHA two-in, two-out rule, and overtime. As you well know, your Fire Department is involved in risk management, and we look at various risks, and we implement strategies to either prevent their occurrence or establish emergency response capabilities to lessen their severity. And we're managing risks related to people, to property, and to the environment. And certainly, when we need to respond, because we can't prevent an emergency, it's how fast we can get there with an appropriate amount of resource that will determine the level of risk. Historically, we in Glendale have set levels of prevention, emergency response, preparedness based on local risks, and that has changed over the last hundred years. Glendale's risk management, the single biggest risk to this community is the wildland urban interface. Many of us, if not all, certainly within the chamber here, remember the College Hills Fire in nineteen ninety. Over sixty homes were either damaged or destroyed. Nothing has changed in this community in relationship to the wildland urban interface other than the preventative nature of the things that we've implemented since then. But we still have homes that are in the mountainous areas. We still have plenty of brush that's there. It's a very dense urban area, multiple family residents, high-rise buildings, commercial occupancies, and so forth. High traffic congestion along with the four major freeways that intersect the city. We do have hazardous materials storage in the town here, and certainly there is terrorism targets, and not just from a national terrorism level, but certainly on the more of a local level. There are always people that want to have, make an impact on the American way of life, and we need to be prepared for that. The demographics in Glendale, well, we have multiple languages. We have a large senior population. All of this adds to the risks that we need to manage here, and we like to believe that we do a good job in managing those risks. The way we do it is we look at three primary areas. We either want to prevent an emergency from taking place, and we've got fire codes, and we do engineering on structures and on other types of developments, environmental regulations and disposal rules, the household hazardous waste collection program, very successful of keeping hazardous waste out of the landfill, out of the general environment. We do public education, very, very aggressive vegetation management program. That unto itself is one of the largest things we can do to prevent a wildland urban interface fire like we had in nineteen ninety with the College Hills Fire. In the protection side of an emergency response, you're well aware, we respond to fires, to medical calls, to rescues, hazardous materials. We're staffed, we train, and we equip the firefighters and paramedics to respond to those emergencies. We strategically place our resources in the neighborhood fire stations. We'll have a map. I'll show you those again. And for those emergencies that we cannot prevent, and for those that we can't respond to every one of them, we need to prepare the community. We will always have earthquakes. There will always be certain types of emergencies that will be larger than the Fire Department is staffed and equipped to handle. We do our CERT program, our GRIP training, CPR training, along with the very successful Metropolitan Medical Response System, where we integrate the medical response component with the local hospitals and the pharmacies within town here. Resources we have available to us, two-hundred-and-forty-three authorized department personnel, divided up into a hundred-and-eighty of them are in the operations side, nineteen are dispatch related with Verdugo Fire Communications. Verdugo Fire Communications, I believe, is the best dispatch center that there is in the business. Dispatch over sixty thousand calls a year, and over the almost thirty years of its existence have made almost nil as far as any significant errors in the dispatch component. Very proud of that center. Twenty-three prevention personnel and twenty-one staff personnel or support personnel. The neighborhood fire stations we have here, Station Twenty-Eight up in La Crescenta, dropping down into Station Twenty-Nine in Montrose, Station Twenty-Three in the Chevy Chase Canyon area, Station Twenty-Four by Glendale College, Twenty-Six on North Brand, Twenty-Seven out on the west side over near Glen Oaks and West Rand, dropping down to Station Twenty-One, there's the pointer, Station Twenty-One over by the Galleria, Station Twenty-Two, south part of Glendale, next down close to Memorial Hospital, and then Station Twenty-Five over at the base of the Glen Oaks and Chevy Chase Canyon areas. So our nine neighborhood fire stations, that's where we primarily respond to emergencies from, and then we have two supplemental facilities, our Environmental Management Center, where our fire prevention staff works out of, and also is a collection point for hazardous waste collection, and then our Training Center down on West Chevy Chase. On the operations side, we have a daily staffing, a sixty personnel divided up into nine engine companies, one at each fire station. Each one of those engine companies is staffed, a fire captain, one fire engineer who drives the fire apparatus, and two firefighters. In addition to the firefighters, most of the companies have one firefighter who is also trained as a paramedic. Three truck companies, the staffing is similar. Those truck companies, one is in Montrose, the other is at Station Twenty-Six on North Brand, and the third one is at our main station next to the Galleria. Five paramedic rescue ambulances, each one is staffed with two firefighter/paramedics, and again, they're coming out of the Montrose Station, Station Twenty-Nine, Twenty-Six on North Brand, Station Twenty-Five down at, next to Chevy Chase and Verdugo, Station Twenty-One by the Galleria, and Station Twenty-Two on South Glendale there.
Mr. Mayor, just by way of explanation, for those people not familiar with it, some of you are, an engine is what we think of as a fire engine, the pumper truck. The truck companies are the long tiller ladders, so in the Fire Department, not every piece of equipment is a fire engine. An engine is a pumper truck. A truck company carries the ladder. In our case, it's the three tillers-
Correct.
-great big long trucks. Those are considered truck companies, and of course, you know, rescue ambulances.
Correct. Thank you. Battalion Command Team with one operations battalion chief and one firefighter staff assistant, and they are housed at the main station also. In addition to the traditional resources we have, we have special emergency response resources, our urban search and rescue team, which is housed at Station Twenty-Nine in Montrose, and our hazardous materials response team, which is again over at Station Twenty-Four by the college. Both of these units are ones where we have a, I call it a force multiplier when it comes to the return on the Glendale community's investment in the Fire Department. Each of these units is cross-staffed with either an engine or a truck, or in the case of Station Twenty-Nine, an engine and a truck, and we're able to get double duty out of them. So with some available time that the firefighters have, we provide them specialty training to get hazardous material response team and an urban search and rescue team. There's no Fire Department in Southern California that has the same type of emergency response capabilities that the Glendale Fire Department has. L.A. City and L.A. County each have hazmat teams, they each have USAR teams, but neither of those agencies have one of those teams in a battalion which would be an equivalent size to the city of Glendale. Very proud of that investment that the city has made in the Fire Department in that arena, and then the return on that investment that the firefighters have been able to make. Have an air and lighting unit, and then two water tenders. One is partnership with Glendale Water and Power, and the other is actually on loan, and we staff it from the Office of Emergency Services.
What is air and lighting?
That will be a lighting unit that we could take out to an emergency, and it has large floodlights that we can light up the scene. In addition to that, the air cylinders that we use for firefighting, they need to be recharged, and we're able to refill them from a mobile unit. Dropping down into our fire company staffing, we're getting somewhere to the crux of the issues here. Fire companies are staffed with four firefighters, and they provide an increased level of service versus three firefighters. It's almost a no-brainer when we think that four can do more than three. That's true in almost every area of life. In particular, there's many studies that have been done on the effective and efficiency-ness of fire companies, whether they're staffed with five, four, or three. There's a component here. We're going to talk about how this four-person staffing, four firefighter staffing affects each type of incident in a moment here, but I want to pause for a moment and just remind us that we are really looking at a system-wide approach to providing fire and emergency medical services for Glendale. Although we're going to talk much about the operations side of it, operations personnel, they're not just responding to emergencies. They're doing fire prevention, they're doing public education, they're doing disaster preparedness. All of these activities take place with our personnel that are currently assigned to the operations side of it, and it's important to remember as we have a four-person, four-firefighter company, that it provides a higher level of service, and it does come into play when we look at the system-wide approach when other activities come into play also.
You might just note on this slide, you might make a note on this slide, this is a key policy issue for the city council. This is a key service-level policy issue. It's not to say that every community has four people on every engine or every piece of apparatus. Many don't, so this has a cost associated with it. It's one of those key issues where you are balancing risks, levels of service, with resources committed. And I know Chief Howard will talk more about the pros and cons of the two different approaches later, but this is one you should mark, because this is kind of a key policy issue that Mr. Philpott has addressed before and which we'll address further in the presentation.
Our staffing levels are, they're established locally. What is our local risk, and how are we managing the local risk? Again, beyond simply responding to emergencies, all the system works together to manage the risks that we have here in Glendale. Our current model's evolved through many years of operational experience, and for many of us that have been around for a long time, we remember that there was very significant structure fires in the seventies and into the early eighties. And actually, the model that the Fire Department had back then, phased out in the mid-eighties, was an engine company that was, it's actually two fire engines. One of the fire engines was a very special piece of equipment that had an elevated tower where we could have a fire stream that was deployed up to fifty feet high, and we used that to provide a large fire flow. Many of these structure fires required thousands of gallons of water per minute to extinguish, and because of the amount of significant structure fires we had in the seventies and the early eighties, we had that model. Significant structure fires went away. We did a better job at preventing fires and building into the town preventative majors such as fire sprinklers, and therefore, we changed the model, and we no longer have that model. That's just one illustration of how we've changed over the years. Our staffing levels, I want to look at four different types of incidents that we respond to. One of the great questions we get all the time is, somebody is having a medical problem, and we send out the fire engine and the ambulance. Why do you get both when somebody calls? Well, I've got an example here of somebody who had called and a member of their family's in cardiac arrest. They're not breathing, and their heart is not pumping. What you're going to get there is four firefighters on the engine, fire engine, two paramedics that are coming in a rescue ambulance. And how we would divide up that labor there, we have the fire captain who would supervise the incident, provide for scene safety. One of the paramedics is communicating with the hospital. Two of the firefighters are doing CPR, and the other paramedic is administering drugs. The fire engineer is, he is bringing in additional equipment that's needed. He's getting the ambulance ready to respond to the hospital, and he's providing some security for the apparatus and equipment outside of the scene that we're going to. In the event that we don't need them all, as another slide talks about this way, we'll cancel one of them. If we don't need the rescue ambulance, we cancel them. If the engine isn't needed, we cancel the engine. Typically, the engine will get there first. We have nine engines and five ambulances. In a structure fire, when we have four firefighters, it allows for a very rapid, aggressive interior firefighting and rescue operations. I'm going to combine this in a moment here when we look at OSHA's two-in, two-out rule, but you can understand this, that when we have four firefighters on an engine, we can arrive on scene. Three of those firefighters, the captain and the two firefighters, can advance a hand line inside of the structure and extinguish this small fire before it becomes large. The time/temperature curve, you get about eight minutes, and that fire is outside of the area that it initially started in because it's flashed over there and it's moved into other areas within the structure. We want to be very rapid, as quick as we can, to extinguish that small fire before it gets big. In addition to being able to rapidly extinguish it, it's a reasonable level of firefighter safety. Very familiar you are that firefighting is a very hazardous environment. We want to be well-prepared, we want to be well-equipped, and we want to provide a reasonable level of safety based on the number of personnel that we have on scene. Wildland fire, you can see the picture there. Town hasn't changed too much. We still have homes that are up in the urban interface area, wildland interface area, and again, all of those fires start small, and we need to get water on those fires. And most of those fires, the way that we're able to initially extinguish them is with a hand line, and many times, we have to extend that hand line hundreds of feet to reach that small fire, and we need personnel to do that. We have areas that are heavily populated, they're heavily congested, it's some narrow winding roads, and sometimes we have to do neighborhood evacuations. We need personnel to be able to do that. Physical rescue. Vehicle accidents happen all too often here, and when we have a vehicle accident, generally we're going to get an engine and a truck and an RA along, if somebody's trapped in there, we're going to get the Battalion Command Team on scene. And each one of those members has a very specific duty to do. If you took the six firefighters that normally go to a cardiac arrest type call, well, they're there to take care of that patient. Leave the other four firefighters that are on the fire truck to handle the rescue tools to remove the victim that's trapped from inside of that vehicle. We have special activities. It's not all just about responding to emergency, and we understand that. One of the best things we do is prevent emergencies, and we work very hard at doing that, but there are special activities that will require one-person reduction in fire company staffing. Although they can be recalled for significant incidents, usually that detail that they're going on is here in town, and they have a portable radio with them. Some of these types of details are training programs that we put on for the Recruit Academy, our Explorer Program, the Community CPR, Junior Fire Program, CERT instructions, so forth. We have wellness evaluations. Annually, we evaluate the physical fitness of each firefighter. It's a great way to take care of our firefighters and to ensure that we have the lowest level of costs associated with any types of injuries. And we are an organization that does have meetings, unfortunately, and we have to send people to those. There's other times, though, we have weather conditions, and we don't allow any staff reduction on our fire companies. We need all four. In fact, sometimes we even staff up. The red flag warning, the wind's blowing, we have significant fire danger in town, and we want to increase our staffing. So it will vary, and we're flexible with that, and we have to understand that, again, it's a system-wide approach. If we're going to accomplish everything, there isn't an unlimited amount of money to accomplish all of this, and therefore, we will do a risk management with our staffing and reduce the staffing by one firefighter, one position on that company, but we don't go below three. It's unsafe to go below three, and it's not effective at all to go below three. Talk a little bit about Cal-OSHA two-in, two-out requirement, okay? It's established for firefighter safety, and what it requires is that there is a two-person rescue team. It's to be assembled outside of a confined space, in this case, a structure fire, where a firefighting team is entering, and it's an atmosphere that's immediately dangerous to life and health, that's the IDLH environment. So we have to have that prior to entering a building with two firefighters, with one exception. In the event that there is a possible rescue situation, then we can enter without having a two-out. So two firefighters could go in without having the two-out, or in our case here in Glendale, three firefighters could go in, three or more effective than two, to provide a surge inside of that structure. The provision, it's not intended, and there may have been some confusion before, this requirement, the social requirement, is not intended to be a staffing requirement. There's different ways to getting the two-out, and we could understand if we had two, three-person fire companies that we assembled together because we needed a two-out, there wasn't a rescue problem, but we had a structure fire, well, we would have to wait for that second company to get there. You can do that. OSHA rules allow for that, but there's a time delay. I'm giving you an example of this. We've got a situation, a possible structure fire that is, let's take the top of Chevy Chase Canyon. Station Twenty-Three responds to it. If Station Twenty-Three had only three people on that engine, when they arrived on scene, and there's no rescue problem, they could not enter the structure until the next company was coming over, the engine Twenty-Five. Twenty-Five is probably around a five-minute response time before they get up there. So they're waiting, Twenty-Three's waiting prior to entering that building, and by the time they enter the building, it is quite likely that the fire has extended beyond the room of origin. That's that time/temperature curve. So having four on that company at Engine Twenty-Three, in the contrast, two firefighters could enter that building, small fire, put that fire out before Twenty-Five got on scene. We can do that if we have four, because we can have two go in and we have two stay out. That's the difference between the two. State mutual aid system. We participate in that annually. We've done it for many, many years. In fact, we have been the recipient of the master mutual aid system. The most common type of resource that is exchanged between municipal fire departments is type-one engines, commonly called a strike team. Strike team of type-one engines is five engines with a leader. Type-one engines are required by the state system to be equipped with four firefighters. Some confusion about that earlier.
But Steve, just for clarification purposes, when they are sent in a mutual aid situation? So if we had three-person engine companies, and we were called to send an engine company to a mutual aid situation, we'd need to staff that with four?
That's correct, and the way we would have to do that is if we couldn't take somebody that was readily available from a special duty assignment, and we don't have very many. In fact, we have only one firefighter position that's on special duty. We would have to take a firefighter off a second engine, put them on that engine that is responding out of the city, and because we don't have two, we take that engine out of service, and therefore, we would be down two engines. There's a cumulative effect of doing that. Step back and look for a moment at fire company staffing over the years. You can see the fiscal years, starting in nineteen eighty, dropping down to two thousand seven, the population, the total sworn positions, again, that's not the total number of positions within the Fire Department, only the sworn positions or the safety positions. You can see we had a hundred-and-sixty-one, and we drop on down to our current a hundred-and-ninety-two. We've got a little bit of a watershed year in two thousand when we implemented the paramedic program, and you can see the total sworn positions per thousand people. Nineteen eighty, we had one-point-one-six. In two thousand seven, we had point-nine-three. Even that point-nine-three is not an apple-to-apple comparison, because in nineteen eighty, we had paramedic service, it just didn't happen to be firefighters. It was a private contract company, and we would have to add to that number there if we wanted to have an apple-to-apple comparison, an additional eighteen positions. Fire company staffing, just with a variety of departments. Later on, and it's covered very extensively in the supplemental material, we have two groups that we- groups that we look at. One is area fire departments. Those are all of the, all the fire departments that are in Area C, basically, the San Gabriel Valley. In addition to, we had LA City and LA County where we can, because we touch them. And then we have the labor market. Fire departments are labor market cities. Those are ones that we use during salary negotiations with the labor groups. Those are ones that have been looked at as being comparable to the city of Glendale in a variety of ways, whether it's full-service government or the types of sizes of communities and the types of hazards that may be involved there. And you can see through the chart here, where does Glendale land? And you're pretty much right in the middle there, .93 with our 207,000 population. Another way of looking at it here, the fire company staffing, we have four. The labor market, again, distinction with labor and area, areas, Area C, San Gabriel Valley fire departments, the smaller departments, they're not exactly have the similar risks that Glendale has. These would be ones like San Marino and South Pasadena, Arcadia, San Gabriel, some of those departments. And then the labor market, the larger ones. So 81% of the labor market have four firefighters on engine companies. Drop down to truck companies, 86% have four. Coming back to the engines, the areas, area fire department, 58% have four. And on the area, it's 17%. Again, the most significant part about that area is many of those smaller departments, they don't have truck companies at all. And then the most weird one, you're probably thinking, well, how do you get an average staffing of 4.5 firefighters in the area fire departments? Well, the reason being is because LA City, who would be included within that area fire department, has five firefighters, and they have, oh, I've forgotten the number, they've got roughly 50 truck companies throughout the city. That's in the chart. State and national authorities, they validate four-person fire company staffing. You will remember the '03 fires that swept through Southern California, in particular, the San Diego area. Governor put together a blue-ribbon commission to look at what happened there, what could have, what could have we done differently to have a better impact on the outcome there? There were thousands of homes and several lives were lost. Well, part of that commission's recommendation was to staff CAL FIRE engines that are in the wildland urban interface during those wildland or high-fire danger times with four firefighters. CAL FIRE is the largest fire department in the state. The task force that was put together following the '07, just to repeat, did it '03, we did it again in '07, they came back with the same recommendation. It hadn't changed, there's a whole variety of other recommendations, but in particular, looking at the staffing levels. Something that is similar to what they experienced there, and bringing us back to what is our biggest threat here in Glendale, is the wildland urban interface fire. The National Fire Protection Association, the international association that has fire and life safety standards, they have more than one, but one that we're most familiar with is the 1710 standard. Its recommendation is that engine companies are staffed with four firefighters. It does state that if you have complex areas, high risk, you may need five or six. It also states that on truck companies, you should have four firefighters. The insurance services office, that's the organization that rates or classifies fire departments over 40,000 across the United States with their rating as a relationship to your insurance rates. Now, their staffing requirement is a little bit different. It's a little bit of a mathematical calculation to get there, but in essence, it says this. Out of the 100% or 100 points that your rating is based off of, 15% or 15 points is based off your staffing levels. And currently, if we were to be rated, we would receive 12.5% or 12.5 points. All right, jumping into professional or volunteer staffing. We've chosen to have professionally staffed fire department. You know, after 100 years, we've transitioned. We've had volunteers before, but we currently don't have volunteers. And the reason we don't have them is because this town, this community, needs to have a professionally-based fire and medical response system. If we go to reserve a volunteer-based system, it's going to reduce the level of service that we provide to the community. Will you save money? Yeah, you will. You'll save money, but you'll also provide a less level of service. Volunteer-based systems, they provide minimum level of service, usually in rural or small suburban communities, that have limited risks. There's no fire departments within our labor market or areas that have a traditional all-volunteer fire departments. There's only one that has somewhat of a volunteer fire department, Sierra Madre. They have paid paramedic responders, and then they have volunteers to do the firefighting component. In San Diego County, there are several volunteer-based departments. And that is a huge issue currently in San Diego County. And they're wrestling with, how do you provide fire protection to communities that is as vast as they have in San Diego? But coming out of the '03 and the '07 fires, they recognize they need to wrestle with that, and need to figure out how to provide a fully-staffed, ready-to-respond fire department for the types of emergencies that they've been confronted with. Those cities, and if we were, want to look at volunteer or reserve-based organization, what are the issues that we'd be faced with? Well, here's some of them. We do that, we'll have a minimally leveled, level training is provided to those that would volunteer or be a reserve. That's just due to the nature of available time and resources. In a continual state of training, as individuals join and leave, you have a high turnover rate. Actual emergency experience is very limited. In fact, for many of them, they may have been there for two, three, four, five years, but it's the type of experience where they're getting one year five times over. They don't get cumulative career-based experience. And when they leave, you lose that experience. Scheduling of staffing is very unpredictable. It's difficult to tell a volunteer to show up at a particular time. The nature of volunteers. So our staffing levels would vary greatly. Very limited training, if any at all, for complex specialty emergency incidents such as hazmat and technical rescue that you saw our teams would do. And one of the biggest issues we'd be confronted with is a mutual aid incompatibility with surrounding fire departments. We have the unified response system currently in place with Area C. It works very, very well. Sierra Madre doesn't participate with that, and they can't participate because they do not have a professionally-staffed fire department. Drop in the emergency response. Again, our stations are located near the center of the emergency response districts. Although we do have activities that impact our emergency response, some of these include insufficient resources. There's just not enough to go around. We will have simultaneous emergency incidents. There's traffic, there's narrow roads, the topography, it's not easy to get from the north part of Brand all the way up to the top of Starvale and Rimcrest. It takes a while to get up there. We have miscellaneous activities that will take a fire company out of its district, out of its station, at various times. Training, fire prevention, physical fitness, public education, apparatus, equipment maintenance, et cetera, they're listed there. We recognize those issues, and we've been working on those issues for many years, and we will continue to work on those issues. Some of the things that we've done in the last several years, and some actually, most recently here. When this issue came to us about our physical fitness activity, in particular, the Brand Park exercise program, is brought that it increased our response time. I took that to heart. And I didn't just take that to heart for Engine 27, who has an off-site exercise location in Brand Park. I looked at all 12 of our fire companies. System-wide approach we're looking at. What is the impact of our off-site exercise locations? How many times do we respond from an off-site location? How many times do we have a faster response time? Because the incident is closer to the off-site than it is to the station itself. How many times is it a longer one? We did that analysis, and it wasn't an easy analysis to do. We had to manually look through hundreds of fire reports to find it out, because the computer just doesn't track it like that. But we did that. It's the right thing to do. And we discovered this, we had a response time impact. And because of that, we had a very small, we had 21 responses over the calendar year where this took place, in comparison, over 15,000 emergency incidents that we went to. But even with a small number, the right thing to do is to not impact emergency response for an activity that we can do in a different setting. Wellness and fitness for firefighters is very, very important. And we are committed to it. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars each year on that, and it saves the city millions of dollars by us doing that. And because of that, we've removed the use of the off-site locations. Our fire companies will not be going to an off-site location to do physical fitness. We'll reinforce the onsite types of equipment that we have. I've spoken to every Glendale firefighter about this. We are in agreement with this. It's the right thing to do. We're here to serve the community, and we're going to respond as quickly as we can. We've installed a traffic preemptive system in the downtown area. It's not completely built out, especially with the Americana being built, some of the intersections aren't quite upgraded yet, but we're in the process there. We've reduced off-street parking on narrow roadways, primarily in the Adams Hill area. This helps us to get in and around that area. We added paramedic rescue ambulance 22. That's our fifth RA. That had a very significant, in fact, I got it here, let me read this real quick. It's on the slide, I just got it the other day. Had a great improvement in our response time. The most dramatic improvement was in 22's district. Again, that's in the South Glendale area, down there by Glendale Memorial. Adding that fifth RA in that area, what we were able to do is have an 82-second improvement in the rescue ambulance's response time within that district. It was a great improvement within that district, very proud of that. We implemented unified response, and what that does is it increases available emergency responders to come. We are submitting a grant request to implement an interactive video conferencing capability for training. Talked about things that take companies out of their station or out of their district. Training is one of them. We can't eliminate all the training activities that we need to do, some of it is just flat manipulative training that we need to do at our training center or in different locations, but some of it we can, if we can keep them in the fire station and have a central location that we can broadcast out of. And that's our goal. We're going to implement that. And certainly, we understand the faster we respond with appropriate staffing, here's what it's going to get us. We're going to have a reduction in the likelihood of conflagration-type fires, such as the College Hills fire. We're going to have increased citizen firefighter safety with fewer and less severe injuries. We have less property damage, and we're going to have less environmental damage. And we want to do that. It's the right thing to do. This community deserves that. About 11.5% of our incidents that respond to our fire type-related, they're not all structure fires, there's car fires, and there's dumpster fires, and a variety of different types of fires. We categorize them as fire. When we receive a call, we send an appropriate response to it. If it's just a fire alarm, we're just going to send one company. If there's a fire that's visible, we're going to send a full assignment. It's going to be three engines and two trucks, rescue ambulance or battalion command team. About 82% of our incidents are medically related. Again, talked about, we send an engine, we send an RA, the engine typically gets there faster. If we don't need one, we send it away, make it available for another response. A little bit of a chart about our annual incident trending. '92, '93, you can see we went from 12, 12, 8, and we've, '06, '07, 15, 3. Very proud of the fact that we're making good progress in reducing structure fires in town here. We're very aggressive in our preventative activities. Our prevention is key. We want to do more and more of that, the best we can. We can't eliminate them all, we recognize that. But you see, the fire calls have gone down, the medical calls have gone up, and we're doing all we can to efficiently and effectively respond to people's medical needs, and we want to provide the best level of service we can for that. Different way of looking at some of this, this is 137 fire types in a month. July is a high, June low, and a similar type thing with the medical, about 1,000 a month. A little comparison to some of the labor market or the area cities, again, for EMS, we're 82. Labor market is 71, area 75. I believe part of that's some of the demographics in town here, of why we have a very high EMS response total. Fire incidents, again, 11, and 8 and 15. One of these is very difficult on capturing this data. Not every department captures data the way we do. So even within this, this is not exactly an apple-to-apple comparison. We've done our best to try and make it like that, but there is, there's some leeway here. One of the issues that came forward was about our Class 1 rating from the insurance services office. It was a statement that was made, it didn't matter whether we were Class 1 or Class 4. That's not true, okay? It's not true for either commercial insurance rates or residential. I've got two charts. Let's start with the commercial rate here. And again, just a little background for you, the insurance services office, they analyze fire loss, and they put a rating schedule together. That rating schedule is submitted to the state insurance commissioner. It's accepted by him, his office. And insurance companies, it's a, they voluntarily use it. If they don't use this rating schedule, they have to have a different, validated rating schedule. The insurance office's rating schedule, I believe, is the most prevalent schedule in the nation. But I can't tell you how many in California insurance companies actually use it. I suspect that most use it. But again, I couldn't get that data. And what it provides here is a Class 1 depart, excuse me, Class 5 department, that's the base rate. If you have a Class 1 department, you're going to have a minus 12 to, minus 10 to minus 12% reduction in your commercial rate. If you're Class 10, you're going to have 58 to 72% for your commercial insurance rates. On the residential, not quite as dramatic, but it's still a change, ranging from Class 1 at minus 4% all the way down, if you're Class 10, you're going to add 25 to 60%, depending on the type of construction of your occupancy. Some confusion on that, we wanted to clarify that. Here's just a little chart that shows the emergency responses as we have them throughout a 24-hour period. It does vary. Obviously, during the daytime, when people are awake, there's going to be more accidents that take place, and we're going to respond to more of those kinds of incidents. Taking a look, a little look at our emergency response in comparison to labor market, and we'll do the area departments, too. Again, the NFPA standard, 1710, not only does it have a staffing performance objective, it has an emergency response performance objective. Its performance objective here is to respond to 90% of the incidents within five minutes. That's five minutes of being dispatched. You can see here where Glendale is in comparison to the labor market on fire incidents, we meet that 64% and 79 for medical. We're not at the 90%. No department is at it. We strive to get as good as we can. In the labor market, you'll see here, excuse me, the area departments, again, I've got this sorted by, it is, it's not sorted. It's just, I'm sorry. The other charts are sorted. This one's not sorted, the next one will be. Thank you. It's alphabetical. You can see those that we're compared with. Okay, here's the one that's sorted, numerical. On labor market cities, all incident average, 410, we're the best on that. And you see coming across there, not quite the best on 404 with medical Glendale, Pasadena creeps in there at a 358. And again, the NAs, that's just because those cities, they don't capture that data, so it wasn't available for us to show it to you. On the area, most of these area departments, we dispatched for it out of Verdugo, and therefore, we were able to capture all of that. You can see the city and the county down at the bottom, they don't, they didn't give us an average for all incidents, but here's where we're at compared to the area fire That's the bulk of it. I went as fast as I could. And we've got plenty of supplemental, and we're here to answer any questions you might have. Any questions?
One, maybe I missed it. The emergency response is the insurance services office, and you talked about the protection classes.
Yes.
Does that have anything to do with, are we in a certain protection class, or?
Correct. We are Class 1 rated. That's the highest rating you can receive. There are, actually, in your supplemental material, there'll be a chart that shows we are one of 55 departments throughout the nation out of 40,000 or 45,000, I think it's 40,000 departments that are rated.
Commercial and homeowners.
Pardon me?
Commercial and homeowners were rated one.
That's correct.
We can't get much better, can you?
Except you don't get a discount because you're in the fire zone. Neither do I, Mr. Draymond.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Mr. Weaver had another question, I'm sorry. But it relates to that.
But it relates to that point. Because one of the questions that's been asked, constituents have asked me, and I want to raise it here, because I don't know the answer. It's a great thing to say that you're a Class 1 department, but if you're talking about insurance, both commercial and residential, as you mentioned, at what point do commercial and residential insurance ratings go down vis-à-vis class rating? In other words, between a Class 1 and a Class 2 department, how are commercial and residential rates?
How are the rates themselves, or what is the percentage?
How does it affect the consumer, the insurance consumer? In other words, between a Class 1 rate and Class 2 rate?
This right here should be the easiest and simplest comparison to get. And this one, we're on, you know, let's go to a residential. Here's a homeowner policy. If Glendale, the city of Glendale had a Class 5 rating, your insurance company, if they subscribe to, again, the insurance services rating schedule, and they have to go off 1, their insurance rate would, we can make whatever rate we want. Say it's $1,000 a year. At a Class 5, you'd be $1,000. If you're Class 4, you get a 1% reduction on that $1,000. 2%, 3%, 4%.
You get 40 bucks off.
That's it for residential. You go to commercial?
You're 12 bucks off.
These are the percents.
You're $1,000 in commercial.
I mean, 12.
100.
120.
That's correct. Now, and if you were worse, then you add it up. That's the dollar and cent side of this. And certainly, that's one component. I consider that a small component.
What is class?
To the level of service we provide here. I wouldn't drive my fire in life safety protection based off these rates, but it does have a small impact.
Okay. And then a follow-up question that's kind of related. How much of the Class 1 classification is based on, in a general sense, service as opposed to being based on other things like equipment and so on?
Sure. 10% of the classification is based off the dispatch communications. 50% is based off the fire department. 40% is based off of the water supply. So you've got 10 points, 50 points, and 40 points for a total of 100 points. And then each one of those has subcomponents. I talked about the staffing level within that 50 points. 15 points is...
Saying almost a third is water supply?
Actually, over a third is your water supply. Oh, yeah, if I can comment, a lot of people think that this rating happens to do, you know, entirely with the fire department. And 40% of it is your water system, which is your fire flows, your level of redundancy, the amount of capacity you might have. And of course, fire flows can relate to things like the...
I was going to say, did I ask a wrong question? Is that what's happening?
I think you must have pushed the button in the background. So things like making sure our lines are open and large enough for fire flows to hydrants, and you have enough capacity reservoirs, that has a significant impact on your fire ratings.
And that's the reason why we have to do what we do in terms of upgrading the system to carry the water to keep that rating. Done for years.
If I can, as Chief Howard pointed out, the rating shouldn't be the sole basis on which you decide how much to fund in your fire department. It really needs to be on balancing the risks, the losses you're willing to incur, the types of risks that you have exposure to, and he's noted the ones for Glendale, which we have almost every one imaginable. So the ISO rating shouldn't be the sole basis on which you justify how you fund and how you structure your fire department. It's just one indicator.
We've looked at our pressure, water pressure up in some areas like Chubby Chase. We've deliberately gone in and upgraded the lines to have additional water pressure for those hills.
One of the things that is helpful in looking at ISO, it is only concerned with fire loss. It doesn't look at injuries or death. Insurance companies, this rating is only concerned about what is it going to cost me to rebuild that building? It doesn't take into consideration death and injuries. And that's why I say, it's a component of what we do here. It's not the major component. We should not elevate it to any more than it actually is.
Draymond? I have one last question related to class. What would be a Class 2 city that is comparable in terms of, well, would be comparable to Glendale?
Both Burbank and Pasadena are Class 2.
And how do they, how do they, if we know, how do they rank in terms of number of fire, what are their statistics for number of fires per year in those cities as it compares to Glendale?
I've got it. I just got to find the slide. It's in the supplemental material.
It was 58.
58. Okay. Artie, can you get the lights again, please? Okay.
Help you answer the question, or help you get me my answer a little better. What I'm after is knowing between Glendale, which is Class 1 city and, or department, and Burbank, as an example, which is a Class 2, how many more fires are they dealing with versus Glendale, or are they, and emergency medical issues and so on?
Okay. Okay. Well, look at this chart. This is on Slide 57 in your packet. We're on the screen here. Burbank had 1,500 fire calls, again, 7,100 medical, and some service and other. And so you can come across, and you look at, it's easy for us to capture Burbank and Pasadena because they're part of Verdugo. We capture all of that data. They're the two most local departments we can look at. You can see that Pasadena has a higher percentage of fire-related calls than we have, and I believe most of those are associated with fire alarm-type calls, not actual fires themselves. But again, we don't know when we receive that call. We categorize it as a fire and respond to it in that nature.
It is. They clearly have an issue they should be addressing, because they're getting way too many false alarms in the system.
And they are addressing it aggressively.
Yeah. Because they're sending out a lot of equipment only to turn it around again.
And do we have any numbers at all related to actual, I mean, these are responses, but what do we know about losses? In other words, in other words, you know, part of it is not just a response, but how effective are they? In other words, with a Class 2 versus Classes 1, or just the cities themselves as a comparison?
Again, another thing that even losses may not tell you, you need to almost look at a breakdown of what went into their ISO rating. For example, Burbank's deficiency is 2, maybe their water system. I mean, we may just have more capacity, and we may get a few extra points in some of the water areas that happens to put us over the line, and maybe Pasadena or Burbank don't necessarily have the same level of water system.
We don't have that right in front of us?
No. We can get that, because the ISO ratings are all public information, and can also get their losses, because like us, they publish their losses annually, so that data is readily available. We can tear into that.
The fire loss data, let me just caution a little bit on that. Again, fire loss data is only as good as the estimator makes it. And the estimator in, at least Glendale, and I'm going to assume it's very similar to other departments, is the incident commander who goes out there. We set that fire loss data. We take our best guess at X number of dollars per square foot, and say it was like that, or how much the contents are.
Or you were asking just a number of units?
Our data, our data, we don't go back and capture, what was the actual insured loss? What did the insurance company actually pay?
I'm not talking about the insured loss. I'm talking about something that gives an idea of how effective. In other words, you can go on X number of calls or responses, that doesn't really give you a measure of how they're doing.
And that's one of the difficulties of trying to compare departments to departments. I believe it's much more, I'll just say, it's easier, and I happen to think it's more appropriate, determine what's acceptable in your community. What's the right thing to do for Glendale?
I think the question will be in here. You have 1,600 calls to go out there for fire.
Correct.
How many buildings actually burned? That's what we're trying to get to.
Correct.
You know, you have 1,600 calls, doesn't necessarily mean there were 1,600 fires.
No, absolutely it's not.
But what we're trying to get to is, out of 1,600, did 10 buildings actually burn? Was it 500 buildings that burned?
Right.
I mean, we don't read that many of them in news press. I mean, I could barely recall maybe 10 a year. And that's what I'm trying to get to. It's not how many calls you get, it's how many casualties have you actually had?
Let me bring us back to the systems approach. The majority of our fire prevention efforts are done by fire companies. The inspections that we do are primarily done by fire companies. We are very proud of the fact that we have very few fires in town. And we're able to do that through a variety of ways. One is through code enforcement, inspection, another is through design, fire sprinkler, everything, right thing to do. And if we simply looked at that and said, well, there's not many fires, therefore, you don't need that many firefighters, we're forgetting or limiting that. In fact, that's part of our workforce for the fire prevention efforts.
But to an extent, in all due respect, you are basically shooting yourselves in the foot, because that information is not there to show us the justification for what you're doing. Because what you could do is, then you can have a comparison. You could say, you know what, in city of, let's say, Long Beach, they've had 200 losses. There were 200 buildings that burned, and in our city, we had only 100. And the difference is, in city of Long Beach, let's say, they did not go out there and do the fire prevention, because they don't have a fire prevention, and we have a fire prevention program, and this is the reason, there's a difference. But I don't have any of that data, and whether you can get it or not, I don't know.
We can't.
And so consequently, all I have is just this, and that's why we're trying to ask that question.
We have longstanding data systems, and Chief Howard's right, it's a subjective system, but we note the building and its value as best we can estimate, and then the loss to that building as best we can estimate. We do have that data. It's reported nationally through the Infra System, and we can assemble that data also. It is subjective, like Chief Howard said, based on the criteria that we give our fire captains and our investigators to make those estimates. But other cities use the same estimates. So we can compare them apples to apples, but we're not really sure how rotten the apple is as far as the actual parts of the apple and the accuracy of it. We can compare, but...
Mr. Starber?
For the Verdugo cities, do we capture the size of the fire, the number of alarms?
The number of alarms, yes.
So that would give you some senses to the true nature of the fires. Now, a lot of it will have to do with the makeup of the community. More industrial uses, for example, may tend to have more larger alarm fires. But we do capture in Verdugo essentially the size of the fire and the size of the response that's needed. So that would give you some indication.
Clinical fires, this, different kinds of fires?
I think the last big one I can recall was in Burbank, and we responded. They had a fairly large industrial fire there.
Yeah.
And we've had our share as well.
Been a couple recently in Alhambra and other places elsewhere. Yeah, we can check and do it. Our fires, we haven't had any big fires lately. We had a fire yesterday that would have been a big fire, except the fire company was across the street when the call came in, and it was actually across the street from the station. It happened very quickly, and they knocked it down very quickly, but it was a gas fire, the fire was spreading in the wall. If they, you know, if they had been there that quickly, it would have spread. But because they did, it kept the value, or the loss down. That happens pretty routinely. But we can provide those numbers.
Our mayor is back. By the way, Mr. Mayor, I was very good. I did not ask any question. I waited until you get back. So they're all done?
I know you can be very good, Bob, if you try.
So now that you're back, can I ask my questions?
Yes, Mr. Yesefian.
Thank you. I would say, Mr. Draymond, I had an opportunity to ask questions, so did Mr. Weaver, for your information. Question about page 16, you had, we talked about the state mutual aid system. This is dealing with a two-in and two-out. Could you tell me how many times a year we have responded to the state aid, mutual aid system? How many times have gone out?
15 responses this year.
15 responses, 15 times. And how many companies?
We had, yeah, that's probably a reason, probably 20. We would either send one engine or two engines with each time that we went.
So each time, you have one or two engines?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking for.
Last July.
The other thing is, on page 17, you basically compared staffing, and you show that we had a lot larger per capita staffing. You said this was not an appropriate apple-to-apple. So if we added RMS that we used to have, you basically ran our private...
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Sir.
Okay. If we counted that into this number, would that, what would have that number been?
The 161?
AMR basically had four ambulances that they ran for, it was three at that time. They added one a little later, so probably six people plus whatever support staff they would have considered at that time.
Times three. For 1980, it would have been 18 additional positions.
Okay. So what I'm trying to understand is, what would that number have been, percentage-wise?
For what year?
For 1980.
Need a calculator for that one.
We're getting that done right now.
I'm sorry, 18 more positions in addition to the 161?
Correct.
So that's 179. And what percentage are you looking for from that to current?
Right, per capita.
The 130, 139.
139.
So you take that number and you divide it to 139?
That is 1.28. Or 1.29.
Okay.
So the reduction would have been, would have appeared even greater based on population if those positions had been included.
That's what I was trying to get to.
I might just note while you're on that slide, as both chiefs will tell you, however, population is not the sole indicator of the kind of exposures you face in the fire department. Obviously, medical now has become a very large component. That is entirely driven by population and demographics. But of course, if you have a larger industrial base, if you have the wildland interface, if you have four freeways going through your town, that will also create incidents that aren't necessarily going to be related to population in your community.
I did get, there's a question about our fire loss. One of the joys of BlackBerry, somebody's back at the office watching, and they sent this. For fiscal year 06, 07, our property loss was $4,221,750. And the content loss was $743,000.
Yeah. That, by the way, that doesn't exactly help me, because it's just a number.
Right.
It's just a number. I don't know what that means.
Whether that's good or bad.
It doesn't, there's no relevance to that number.
You could have an office building, and there's your $5 million right out the door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Starber? To be clear when we follow up, are you looking for the value of losses on a comparative basis?
No. What I'm looking for is something that indicates, I can only speak for me. I'm looking for something that helps me understand the efficiency of it. In other words, simply saying that one city has X number of calls or responses, and Glendale has Y number of responses, doesn't tell me how effectively, I'll give you a different example. I worked as an editor for Warner Publishing. If I sit and I accomplish 10 books, 10 manuscripts for them, they go, wow. But if I'm not doing it well, and I'm missing half the material I'm supposed to get, it's not such a wow. So the effectiveness is what I'm after, and just knowing the total number of dollars doesn't help me with that.
Productivity, is there?
And that's, I'm wondering if there's something that helps me with that, and part of that would have to do with, you know, what the, what the outcome is of the call, basically, or the response.
We also...
I don't know if you can provide that. It's just, it's just...
So I can tell you some of the data that we do capture. And we capture this historically. So we can go back for 10, 15, 20 years. But we also capture, what's the value of the risk at hand? What was the value of that building? How much was lost due to fire for the property itself? How much was lost due to, for the contents? So we have that. We could provide that kind of data. We can also go and try and capture data from other departments and provide that. But I understand the question you're asking and we can do the best we can, but I don't think it's quite as, going to be as scientific as some other types of comparisons and analysis of efficiencies.
Mr. Starber.
Yeah, I do think though, for the cities that the data would be available, I'm thinking Burbank past few examples, that if you related the amount of fire loss that's reported compared to assessed valuation and compared to fire staffing, you may have some sense of that. And if you took another community, for example, was a three-person engine company, maybe they're a completely three-person engine company, and looked at the same ratio of fire loss versus total amount of assessed valuation, you might begin to get some sense of how effective they are in...
Or even class one versus class two, not even talking about how many man company, per se.
Right, right. The other one might be just plain response times. Because how quickly you get on it, for example, any city, if you have a comparable city that is actually four-person staffing like we are, the amount, how quickly you get on the fire will generally be an indicator of how quickly you can get the fire knocked down. So if you're a city that has a relatively low amount of firefighters per population or assessed valuation and you have a longer response time, the longer it takes you to get there. In all likelihood, the greater chance you're going to have a fire that's going to be further along by the time you get on top of it. So some of that response time may be an indicator as to effectiveness.
And I think even on your first example, that is relevant, but not to an extent that, I don't think the property value, amount of loss is important to me. Because you may compare it to a little city that the property values are very low. So they may have had 30 houses burned down, but each house was $150,000 compared to one loss in Glendale, which is a million bucks. So it doesn't really tell me anything when you give me just dollar amounts. What helps me is the number of structures. How many structures did you save? How many structures were involved and how many structures you saved? If it was, because you're telling me if there are three people on a fire truck, you can't go in. And my question was going to be, and this was the other thing that I was going to ask you. My next question was going to be, you have three people on the fire truck, you show up there and the house is burning and a woman in there with a dog is screaming, "Help me, help me." And you're going to just sit there and wait?
No, no, no. Are you saying the dog is screaming?
Oh, yes, yes. It's a talking dog. You can go in.
We should clarify. When a rescue, when a rescue is needed, when there's somebody in the building, the two-two doesn't apply. You can go in and make a rescue when you know there's somebody in peril. So that's only when you have a structure fire and you don't have a rescue situation.
That's correct.
On a four versus three, you tell me that you have a two-in, two-out policy.
OSHA. That's required whether you have four, three, five, it doesn't matter what your staffing is.
Right, that's an OSHA policy.
That's correct, sir.
And we put four people on the company because, so this way, we can meet the two-two.
With other, as part, but that's not...
That's not the sole reason.
Not by any means.
Then my, and later on, on slide 12, you basically said, when there is fire structure, structure in fire, you generally have several trucks. You just don't have one.
That's correct.
Okay. Even if you have two trucks, let's assume you have three people on that truck, on each one. Now you have six people in there. So you can still have four, you can still have two and two-out.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah.
So the two-in and two-out, just having four on a truck, I mean, having three on a truck doesn't keep you from having two and two.
Well, it does.
If it's only one truck. But the chances of that one truck is very rare.
No, but there's a delay. Every fire we have is in a district and the closest engine's going to get there. And they're going to do some things. They're going to evaluate the fire, they're going, a three-man company, they're going to evaluate the fire, they're going to get their hose lines pulled, they're going to make sure there's no one in the structure, they're going to do all those things. But meanwhile, that fire that started in the kitchen is now in the bedroom and in the bathroom and getting bigger. And that's the loss, in that particular scenario. That's the loss. There is a, well, there's five trucks coming, or three engines and two ladder trucks coming on a structure fire. That's a fact. But if, but it's, that first engine on scene is where the effect is. If they're three men or three person, they can't, they can't affect the same kind of fire attack that a four-person crew can do. If there's a rescue need, no question, they're all going in, probably.
And generally, how far behind they are?
It depends on the district. If you go to the upper ends of 28th District in La Cremona, it can be six, seven minutes for Station 29 to get there. If you go to 23th District, it can be five, six minutes till 25 gets there to help. If you go to District 21, it might be 30 seconds behind. It might be right behind them. It varies between districts.
How many fires have you had that has gone beyond the room that got started?
Well, we have a four-man crew generally.
Yeah, but generally, you have a fire start somewhere. It doesn't burn the whole house at the same appearance.
No, it doesn't.
It starts somewhere. Most of the time, if you're a smoker, it's probably in your bedroom.
Okay, that's a good example, yeah.
So how many fires you've had that has gone past the room of origin in the city of Glendale?
How many? I have no idea.
And by the time you got there or...
I can give you...
That gives me an indication of, you know, how well were you able to respond to it? I mean...
We had a fire about two, three months ago on Verdugo Road, there was an apartment building fire.
I remember that, I got an email.
Station 24 was first on scene by themselves for a considerable period of time because the next companies are 29 and 25, which is coming from La Cremona and coming from, uh, Chippewa, Verdugo. So 24 is close to their district, they got in. They had, they were able to make an initial attack on that fire, control it, to keep it in the bedroom because the people were out. They got the people out, there was a lady that was burned, there was a lot of things going on, but they dealt with that fire very quickly and effectively because they could do it with four people. They couldn't have got the hose in place in another three, two or three minutes with just three people.
But you see where I'm getting to?
Mm-hmm.
That is an indication you could prove...
Example after example, I don't know how many.
But those are indications that you could give that will differentiate our fire department from the others. You may have turned down ours compared to three-man crew, you may have turned off 100 houses. But ours turned it off at the first room.
Right.
And theirs, half the rooms were burned before they were able to extinguish. So those are the type of things that, I mean, I look for.
Okay.
Because people ask me, what does that mean? First, you know, I don't know what to do. Tell them.
I can sit down and make a list a mile long and then I can make a list of fires that we weren't able to stop, no matter how many people we got on scene. But it's just a statement of individual stories. I'm not sure that it's going to help you understand the importance of every fire.
I don't want to understand every fire. All I'm trying to say is, that will be an indicator that you could use to basically compare our city compared to other cities. And then you get a better understanding of how we compare as far as if we're spending all this money, having extra firefighter there, we're doing all this training and so on and so forth, how do you explain to public that, why are we better than Pasadena or Burbank or Huntington Beach? You could, that would be a good indication.
Well...
Only the kitchen burned down in Glendale, in Pasadena, half the house burned down.
Pasadena's all four-man people. I know they're watching, so I have to be careful with...
I'm just trying to give you an example. Let me go to probably my last question because I think that's the last one I have marked in here, which is slide 21. And it talks about professional volunteer staffing.
Yes, sir.
And I think this has come back, and I had this particular conversation with the former chief, Chief Gray, when I brought up the issue of, what about having some reserve firefighters, just like we have reserve police officers? He got very upset at me. And he basically says, well, I'm only interested in running a professional firefighting company. I am not interested in running a volunteer. Well, I beg to differ with, from him. Because our police department runs a very professional police department.
Yes, it do.
And the reserve operation is, in some cases, very professional. We know, I know several people myself that are better sharpshooters than the ones who are actually on the force. Okay? So that was, that's not the question. Every time we bring this issue of reserve firefighters, this bogus argument, in all due respect...
Comes up.
That, I'm not saying they don't have to be professionals. Some of the firefighters, after they retire, may decide, you know what? I'm running my planning business, but I like to be a part-time firefighter on the side just to kind of hang around the guys and become a reserve.
Many of them do in volunteer departments around Southern California.
And what's wrong with that? Why can't we use a system like that to be able to man the, the sum of the positions that are left vacant because firefighters get sick, they get injured, they have life emergencies? And so you could fill that with that, so your overtime budget doesn't go astronomically up to $5 million a year? What's wrong with that?
You mentioned slide 21, I'll mention to you slide 22. There's a lot of issues related to volunteer firefighters and reserve firefighters. Absolutely, we need to develop a core of cadet program to develop firefighters. Locally, that's the goal of the cadet program. We have that. We don't believe that we can run an effective department by augmenting our manpower with any kind of reserve or cadet program. It just doesn't work in a municipal urban environment. It just doesn't do it.
But there are other organizations that have exactly that and it works just fine.
There are none that I know of.
I am sorry, I disagree with you. There are other organizations that do that. It is not, they're not augmenting it by a 17-year-old, they're augmenting it with retired firefighters, who are professional firefighters, who have retired, they can no longer get paid by the city because of their purse, but they decide, they like the camaraderie of the fellow firefighters and they decide to do this.
There isn't any place like that that I know of.
For free?
Yes. Like buck, buck an hour or whatever, you know? The city covers them for their liability in case they injure. Yeah, just like we do with the police department.
I, in the survey that we did, and again, we sent a survey to the labor market, fire departments, and the area fire departments. The response that we received back from every one of them is that, and I'm going to give you an exception, no department supplements their firefighting force, their fire companies with what you've been told or what you're describing, and a reserve or auxiliary. No one uses them in that manner. Now, the exceptions are this. Los Angeles County has what are called paid-call firefighters. They are used in the remote areas of the Antelope Valley, they're used on Catalina Island, and they're used in one remote station in the Malibu Hills area. That's the, that's the only department that had a paid call of those that we surveyed. And we did not survey every department, we did 15 or 20 of them. But that's all we got back. And that was a question that we asked. So I can only base what they gave us back as to whether they do that or not. There has been some discussion that you've heard here about a program that Pasadena had with auxiliaries. That program was never designed to supplement their staffing. That program was designed for a hiring pool. And they had, had auxiliaries that they, an individual had an EMT certificate, they came in, they took a test, they passed the test, they became an auxiliary for the Pasadena Fire Department. The auxiliary was required to spend one 24-hour shift per week on a fire company, not to replace staffing.
Just to train.
It was, they were to be trained, they could not enter a fire. They were prohibited from entering fires because they're not there as firefighters. They are there to learn to be a firefighter. And then when it came time for the Pasadena Fire Department to hire, they would go to that pool of auxiliaries and hire off of them and then send them to additional training.
Do they still have that program?
They do not have that program and they haven't had it for, I want to say about a decade. And the reason they don't have it is because that hiring pool that they were looking at, it wasn't sufficient for them. They needed to have a bigger hiring pool. I reconfirmed all of that today with their training officer. Not five hours ago, I made that phone call.
I might just suggest, if there are communities that you think are models, then let us go look at them. I mean, if you're aware of some, Mr. Yasefian, you've been told about some, let us go find out what they are and we'll get the information on them. These are fair questions and the use of reserves and issues about overtime are fair questions. And we should be willing to sit down and examine them. If there's somebody's got a model out there that's working better than what we see across Southern California, then by all means, get us the information and let us follow up with it.
I'm letting you answer or fill your questions.
Well, one of the things is, as Mr. Phil Park brought up, issues, and I've seen firefighters in, you know, schools, talking to the kids and so on and so forth, they're generally on duty. Because we're paying them...
Yes.
Very good salary to be firefighters. This is what I anticipate seeing reserve firefighters to do. You know, to go talk to the kids. I don't need to have a professional firefighter that is drawing 100,000-plus salary to go out there and talk to a first grader. You know, in my opinion, a retired firefighter is probably more experienced with the 30 years behind him than a guy who has only 10 years behind him.
Maybe not the energy, but certainly the experience.
Yeah, well, you know, and that would be, that would be the type of things I could see reserves do. So this way, we don't have issues with deployments or so on and so forth. And we don't have community come and says, you know, I couldn't get the person out there because he was out there talking to the kids, and why are you paying this guy arm and leg to talk to a bunch of kids? And that's what I see, that's what police department does.
That's absolutely a fair question, sure.
So I like to see that type of...
And we're working on implementing a system like that. Nationally, that's called Fire Corps. And it is a use of volunteers within a community and whether they're retired firefighters or they are simply some other volunteer that has an interest and expertise in what you're describing, we're working on getting that. We have some that help us with the CERT training. We actually do some of what you are suggesting now with our public education corner. Tanya, I think she's in the back there, she goes to our local schools and she does that education. We have a combination of the two.
We're not getting rid of Tanya.
No way. We love Tanya.
No, we like Tanya.
And Tanya.
But Mr. Dotson, for example, he was a firefighter.
Yes.
He's very energetic, he's retired for a long time.
Yes.
But I'm pretty sure, you know, if he was given an opportunity, he probably picked that opportunity to go talk to kids. And like Rick Reyes, he was in police department, but...
And he still does.
And that's what I'm talking about. So this way, we don't send actual firefighters on duty to this type of activities.
Good. Draymond has a couple questions. I have one, and we're going to take some public comment.
Okay. By the way, I just wanted to say, I thank you for answering a question about the auxiliaries. I was going to quiz you on that simply because I don't get to get away with just making a statement like, they just don't work and move on. So I wasn't going to let you get away with it without saying why. And I thank you for pointing out your opinion as to why. But there was a statement with regard to the issue of three-man companies versus four-man companies and so on. And there was a statement that, you know, the four-man companies are, and it, I guess maybe orchestrates off the topic at hand, that they're not just fighting fires and they're not just doing medical calls, they're also doing different types of activities and outreach and training and education and preparedness programs and all of that. But is there an inference in there? You didn't take it any further than that. So is there an inference in there that if there were a three-man company, that those things wouldn't be happening? Because presumably, that's happening when they're not fighting fires, not while they're fighting fires.
It would have to be happening in a different manner.
Can you help me with that?
Well, for example, individual training program or, I'd say a meeting, a captain's meeting. Right now, we have a captain's meeting where we get all of our captains together to do training and do some policy dissemination, things like that, that we do about once a quarter, I think. We can keep all the companies in service during that period of time, or most of the companies in service. With a three-man company, we'd be shutting down a lot more companies to try and accomplish the same types of things we do now. Individual training, wellness, just an appointment, say, we have to do a medical promotion or something, we take a person down to the Employee Health Services. Right now, they can drive in a car. If it's a three-man company, they've got to take the whole company down there. That's a difference in how we'd have to operate.
I have one last question.
A lot more out-of-district time, basically.
One last question, and it's, it has to do with the issue of reduced on-street parking, and you mentioned Adams Hill, and this area has been a huge concern of mine with regard to the narrow roads and the amount of development and all of that that's been going on there over the years. How and to what degree have you accomplished this? You mentioned it, but, and I believe me, when it comes to PowerPoints, I appreciate the speed at which you went through it, but I'd also like to know how and to what degree you've accomplished that, and, you know, this is an area that's greatly impacted in terms of parking and so on, and it's very hard just to get a vehicle, a normal vehicle, through there.
This process started a number of years ago, and it was primarily started in partnership with the sanitation department, because the trash trucks, they go up and down those hills every day. In conjunction with them, we've had our fire engines go up and drive the streets, see where there's parking issues where they can't get around a corner and paint those street curbs red. The trash trucks do it every week. So working with them, we've identified a lot of areas of Adams Hill particularly that are, got red curb. It's a mainstays issue with red curb, but there's a lot of red curb out there.
You getting any feedback from the residents?
Well, I was involved with that project before I retired in 2002, '03, '04, and a lot of support from the Adams Hill Homers Association at that time, and I haven't heard anything negative since that time about that.
All right, and then Chief Biggs, do we know, are the sanitation trucks that are going up and down, are they two-man crews, or are they one-man crews?
I have no idea. I assume they're one, because they've got those big lift things on them.
Are they the same lift?
I know there's issues with trash barrels up there on the hills too, in Adams Hill, because they have trouble getting them off the...
Oh, you're just trying to deflect the questions over to Steve Zern now.
I am. We were in partnership putting all that together, and he, his lead, his lead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would, I just have one or two questions, but I would like to recognize from our neighboring city of Pasadena, Chief Downs from the Pasadena Fire Department. Thank you for attending. I know our...
I do.
I know our chambers are not as...
He was here.
Our chambers are not as ornate as Pasadena's.
We have no budget.
In any event, Chief Biggs.
Sir.
Is there any fire rescue situation where a three-man crew is superior to a four-man crew?
It's illogical that there would be. I can't think of a single one. There might be certain minor circumstances where they could do as good a job if there were minor events.
Superior. Is a three-man crew, in any scenario that you can conceive, superior to a four-man crew?
No.
And by superior, I mean quicker down, quicker to put down a fire?
No.
Quicker to rescue human lives, quicker to extricate someone from a vehicle, quicker to save someone from a medical situation?
Absolutely not.
If I was a sitting city councilman, and I had a commitment to providing the absolute best public safety to our residents, cost aside, would you recommend, would I, should I advocate, a four-man crew or a three-man crew?
Obviously, a four-man crew would make you, make a much better service to the community, improve the safety and welfare of everyone in the community. Most members of the community never call the fire department, they never have occasion to call us, but those that do appreciate the job that we do because we're able to do it in the best possible manner.
We were talking about comparison of structured fires and costs. How much does a human life cost?
Can't put a price on that.
Have we had any fatalities in the past year? Fire?
Fire fatalities? I don't believe so.
Would you say that...
Not since I was a fire chief. Have there been one?
There was one.
There was a gentleman, wasn't there, in that house with a lot of...
St. Clair.
St. Clair.
On St. Clair?
St. Clair. Have we responded with eight-man crew, two engines simultaneously?
Well, yeah.
Would we have a better shot?
Actually, 20.
Would we have had a better shot at saving him than had just one four-man engine responding?
No, we have to have that full team responding.
But the point is, the more firefighters you have on scene, the better the chances are of saving a human life.
Correct.
Of preventing loss to property, of extricating someone from a vehicle, of preventing further injuries. Is that correct?
And preventing injuries to our firefighters.
This isn't just a line, this isn't some secret code of silence that we have amongst fire department officials throughout the country.
No.
I mean, this is a proven fact. It costs more, obviously.
Yes, it does.
But you're getting what you're paying for, I presume. You're getting that fourth man.
Absolutely. You're getting, you're getting a superior fire service. It's not just the fourth man in Glendale. We have four-person companies, but we have a, we have something more here, and I tend to preach a little bit, but the quality of the people that we hire and bring to work here make that, I mean, you can get four people who are not near the level of dedication and commitment that you have here in Glendale. This is a first-class fire department, putting aside the Class 1, it's a first-class fire department because of the people and the dedication they have to this city and the health and welfare and safety of this city.
If my goal was to, as a councilman, to cut costs, to cut costs as a primary goal, would it be cheaper to send out two firefighters in a suburban to each call to see what's happening, and then if there's a fire or they need help, call on the radio and say, "Guys, we need help"?
It'd be certainly a cheaper way to get, to save money on people, but certainly the city would burn down and...
That would be less safe, of course.
We'll have redevelopment throughout the whole city then.
Okay. I don't have any questions. We do have some cards. Anything before we go to the public?
I just, Mr. Mayor, if you can figure out a way to get a code of silence amongst our council members, I endorse that.
Okay, let's go to, and I don't know what order these came in, so don't accuse me of shuffling the deck. I have Chris Stavros.
At least you saw the deck, I didn't even see it.
Oh, this is, I have Chris Stavros, Herbert Milano. I have three speakers, and I'm, if anyone would like to speak, please submit your card now, because it's going to make a determination as to how long I let everyone speak. Okay. If there are no other speakers, I'm going to go and, I'm going to go really, since Mr. Weaver isn't here to shoot arrows at me, I'm going to give you five minutes each. Is that a smile I see, Mr. Milano? Five minutes, five minutes. Mr. Stavros.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Chris Stavros, President of Glendale Fire Association, a captain here in Glendale. I didn't bring any prepared remarks. I do want to try to clarify a few things that I heard. There are countless times that I have been on in my 11 years here where, because we got there fast, with enough people, that fire was confined to the room of origin. Countless, okay? It's not something that they're easily going to be able to just compare to us or Pasadena. The other thing I want to say is that we don't have an extra firefighter. They showed you, 81% of the departments that are our size operate with four firefighters. Pasadena's fire chief is here, they have four firefighters on an apparatus. Some still have five on an apparatus. The departments that don't have four firefighters are predominantly departments that are smaller, are rural, or that don't have the hazards we have in our city. Some of the, some of the departments who are, have three, have no brush in their city whatsoever, none. They don't even have to prepare for that. One of the things that was talked about is 23's District up Chevy Chase Canyon. One of the things you need to understand is Engine 25 is one of the busiest engine companies in entire Area C. They are often not going to be the second-in-engine on a structure fire in 23's District, because they're going to already be out on a call. When we pulled up here today, they were on a call across the street at the 711. So the second-in-engine company up Chevy Chase Canyon is typically going to be 24, 22, or 21. They could be as long as 10 minutes away. That's not, okay?
Not good.
It's not good. One other thing I want to explain to you is what we do at a fire, and I think if you don't have an objection, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to come back at a later date and show you how we operate at a fire. Because the assumption here is, and I think one of the things that you might not be clear about, Councilman Yusefian, is that we just all show up and we all are focused on one task. Could you go back to that picture, house fire? I was on this fire, okay? Everybody is not just focusing on a rescue. That fire is coming out of the roof of that house because four firefighters went on that roof and cut that hole. And the reason they do that is because when you're doing a search in a structure you cannot see.
You want to vent the smoke.
You want to vent the smoke, okay? So not everybody is just focused in on rescue. Do you know what a pre-33 apartment building is? In our town, we have a lot of center hall, pre-33, hundreds of them. Even if there is an immediate rescue situation in that building, the truck company does not focus on that. They immediately go to, go to the roof, and they do two things. They open up the stairwell on the roof of that building to let the smoke go out of the stairwell, and they cut a hole. They cut a hole because smoke kills more people than fire. That is their job, that is established protocol in the fire service. They're not all focused on one task. They all have a specific task. I'm going to come back at a later date and try to talk to you a little bit more about some fires we've had and how we operate at them. Retired firefighters are not going to volunteer to be firefighters here. For one, the job is too hard when you get to that age. One of the reasons why we have the 3% at 50 retirement is because firefighter injuries went, go way up after age 45. They're not going to do it. Now, if they move to Bend, Oregon, or Enid, Oklahoma, and they have a volunteer fire department where they're going to run a call a year, or a call a month, and they're going to be able to go out and add some experience, they're going to do it. They're not going to hump holes up our canyons. They're not going to do it. One of the reasons we're out in the community is because the Civil Service Commission wants us to recruit local people. I have a lot of people that I represent that would be happy not to go to schools anymore, okay? That's not the fire department you have. You have a fire department that is out, engaged with the community the whole time. We're in service when we're at these events. We're doing it to try to touch people, let them, get them exposed to our profession to do fire prevention and education at the same time. That's why we're out there. If you don't want us out there, that's fine, but I think that's a mistake. We're, at the same time, we're trying to impress upon the local kids who don't have a lot of interest in our profession to be one of us. That payoff is 10, 15 years down the line. One of the other things that is not talked about much is the safety of us. It is categorically safer to have four people on a crew. Just since at a construction site, if you have somebody holding the ladder versus nobody holding the ladder, it is safer. Mr. Phil Pot almost completely discounts that, our safety. I take that very personally. You have a lot of dedicated people in this city. Three versus four really isn't an issue. You're not overstaffed here. If anything, you're understaffed. That chart shows you that. Your staffing per population has gone down, not gone up. We used to have five-man trucks in the city. We don't anymore. LA City still does. Santa Monica still has some. Last thing I want to wrap up and just say, thank you very much for your support of the fire department. Vast majority of things that have been said by people tarnishing this organization are either false, highly inaccurate, or flat-out lies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I want to preface my statements with the following. I don't think that anyone here in the city of Glendale, or those who have lived in the city of Glendale and still have property, that would come here to tarnish the reputation of the fire department. After all, you know, all of us would be dependent one time or another with a call from a paramedic or a call for some type of fire assistance. In my, in my case, my son wants to be a firefighter. He has already gone through a lot of the courses and has excelled in those as well. So far from me to basically make any statements that would disparage this particular group because, you know, they have, we all depend on their ability, on their professionalism, and I think that we're all proud of the way they basically do their work. What is different, though, is that there are very few cities today, especially in California, who are willing to tackle the issue of performance measures and costs. I mean, you look at the city of Los Angeles, just recently, with the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in the red, and the questions that they will not ask, they will not ask any questions of the fire department or the police department. And I ask myself as a systems analyst, why not? Why not have every other department, why not have a similar report as this one coming in from the police department as well? How effective are they, right? How many cases of burglary actually get prosecuted successfully? Those are valid questions, and the fact that you haven't done it for so long has become now a de facto standard. Not to ask questions, simply assume that if you don't ask and if you do not demand a yearly performance evaluation, then none should be given. And I think that's part of the culture that perhaps should change, so that other departments as well say, "Well, look, if the fire department, the police department are held accountable on a yearly basis to come in with a full report on performance measures, that it is across the board, and it's a new culture." But this new culture becomes difficult for many people to accept. Look, there are many things in this report, many of the statistics, that are, that could be questioned with regard to their appropriateness. For example, staffing for 1,000 people or for 1,000 population. Mr. Starber is absolutely correct. You know, it's not a valid measure. You know, but we could also take that to the police department, say, staffing for 1,000 people, should that be a goal as well? It is also a valid measure for them, for them as well. You know, Mr. Najarian, I think the question for councilmen like you that want to regain and sustain the favor of the police department or the fire department, not to ask questions. You know, the problem with the way you phrase your questions, similar to the way you would do it in a courthouse, is that it doesn't allow the other side to come in and basically question you with regard to the manner in which you ask the particular questions. Because I could then ask and say, "Well, if a four-man crew is better than a three-man crew, then a five-man crew should be better than a four-man crew." Or nine councilmen should be better than five councilmen, you know, one for every fire district. So, you know, it's a matter of basically presenting an argument that is truly geared to getting the right type of answers and making it political. The question here is not about politics, it's about, do we have a proper accountability of the way we do things, and should we evaluate a fire department with regard to performance and cost and overtime? And that is the question. Should we? Or should they, should be, you know, hands-off? I haven't seen a report like this one, you know, in this manner, presenting with these statistics from our police department. And yet, there are cities where that is part and parcel of the way they manage. In the city of Seattle, they do that. You know, in, in cities, in Austin, for example, is done that way as well. And they actually have performance measures, and they have objectives. For example, in one city in the state of Washington, they actually have objectives with regard to the percentage of overtime reductions year after year. And so they let the fire departments decide how it is that they're going to manage it. But if we do not control costs, if we give the appearance that basically we cannot touch a particular department, then we're headed in the wrong direction. You know, we admire what they do, we appreciate their professionalism, we depend on them wholeheartedly, and I have the highest respect, you know, for Deputy Chief Howard here and Deputy Chief Skoggins as well. I have a lot of respect for them, but I think this is a cultural thing for every city and for every councilman, to be willing to ask questions concerning performance and costs. Because at the end of the day, if you do that, it makes Mr. Starber's jobs a lot easier, if you create that culture, and I think that's what we're after. Thank you.
We're doing this for you, Mr. Starber, to make it easier.
That's no idea.
The next speaker is Kevin Lasota.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kevin Lasota. I'm a resident of Santa Clarita, and I'm one of your firefighter paramedics. I've been one for almost 26 years now. Before I start, I just want to one thing straight with the one fatality that we had in the city this last year. I do believe that gentleman had passed away prior to the fire, and that's why the fire occurred. I believe that's the case.
So ten firefighters would have made a difference.
The point is, is the fatality wasn't...
And was dead.
The point is, the fatality wasn't caused due to the fire department.
That's what I thought.
Is I'm hearing. But the reason I'm up here is because I feel I'm the only person that's probably in this room qualified to talk about a volunteer program. For four years, I was a volunteer, a reserve deputy sheriff for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I was assigned to the Santa Clarita Valley Cert and Rescue Team, and I held the rank of sergeant. To become a volunteer, especially through the Sheriff's Department, required a lot of training, required a lot of my time. I was required to attend two meetings a month, also required to attend training every month, and I was required to be on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Now, since I work here, I couldn't do that. There's an issue... There's an issue you have with volunteers. They're not going to be here every time you call them. They can't. They have a life. They just can't do it. Same with auxiliaries. The training that's required, as I said, I put in a tremendous amount of training in. My family suffered immensely for the training I had to go through to be a reserve sheriff. And it would be the same as a firefighter. You just can't walk in off the street and be a firefighter. You have to train, you have to maintain your skills. The reason I left the Sheriff's Department was for two reasons. One, the schedule did affect my family. That's what you'll have with volunteers. You will find out that the pressure from the volunteers isn't that they can't do it, it's the amount of time they spend away from their families. It has nothing to do with what they want to do for the job. And the other thing is, is as I said, I was required to be on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, night, weekends. And when I got called out, I might find myself off for 24 hours. Okay? To do that means that if you work, and if you work a 40-hour work week, you're going to have to call in sick the next day to perform your volunteer service. I was lucky, I have the days off that I could do it and it didn't affect me that much. You expect a volunteer to get up at 2:00 in the morning, to go fight a structure fire and go to work the next day? Isn't going to happen, I guarantee it. That's why I left. The time it took for me to dedicate my time to that program wasn't what they needed. They needed somebody more dedicated than I was. Plus, the other reason I left was the volunteers they did have did not show up to the callouts. They just didn't, for the various reasons as I stated. Saturday morning, Sunday morning, pager goes off, we have someone lost in the mountains. Got to go out and find them. Gosh, you know, I have to go to church this morning, I can't make it. I have a family function this afternoon, it's really important, I have this family function, I got relatives that came in from out of town, I can't make it to that. That's the issue you have with volunteers. They will not be there when you need them. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
While you were at the Sheriff's Department, how many volunteers were in the, in the core, volunteer corps?
Of the Sheriff's Department itself? I can't answer that question, sir. I can only tell you how many were on the search and rescue team in Santa Clarita.
So, you were at the search and rescue team in Santa Clarita?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.